Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, hello there.
Hello. All right, we're getting started here. We just got in the room, so give us a couple minutes.
All right, sorry about the glare on my screen.
Yeah, you're fine. No worries.
Stupid camera. Oh. Is that Commissioner Eastridge?
Okay, one more time.
Yes.
With feeling.
Okay.
Yes.
He took your spot.
Oh geez. You treat that chair well, sir.
All right.
Oh, I don't have an agenda. Yep, I got one now. Okay. You can rush the table. Nobody else is going to. Right? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead. It's six o'clock, isn't it?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Let's go ahead and bring our Public Works Special City Council meeting to order. I think that's recording. I hope so. So I believe it is. So I'm not gonna worry about it.
There's a little thing in the corner that says recording on my screen.
Okay, perfect. Very good. Okay. I'm gonna do roll call real quick and then statement and then we'll start talking with Mr. Schultz. All right, roll call here. Counselor Myers.
Here.
Counselor Lindner.
Here.
Counselor Cuthbertson.
Here.
Counselor Williams.
Here.
Counselor Ray.
Here.
And our, we have a special guest, Commissioner Eastridge. You can say you're present.
Oh, present.
And then Chuck Schultz is here in the room with us. And then Mark Murray is online.
I'm here.
Okay, excellent. All right. So essentially, the reason for this meeting is we're gonna discuss, I think it's mostly compliance issues and what we need to do to get back into compliance and what it's gonna take to make the repairs and get us back into compliance. And that's why Chuck is here. So I, beyond that, sir, I'm gonna give the floor to you. Okay.
Well, not a fun meeting, but all in all, I'm going to, and I'll say this right up front. I, feel free to write down questions or interrupt me if you want. I, I've been going over this in my head for about a week to try to make sure I don't lead you, but inform you because decisions really need to get made.
Understood.
And I, I know what I want if money was no object. But I don't wanna lead anybody in that direction. So if we start with a little history beforehand, I guess, just of cities and my knowledge of them, I, I've had about fifty cities as a DRC under my contract for various reasons over the last thirty something years doing this. And there's five main points of our infrastructure as a city that we need to take care of. We have our roads, street sidewalks, of course. We have our parks, city property, which contains our city buildings. We have our stormwater, which has grown in regulatory requirements exponentially in the last few years and will continue to do so. And because we have, because the state, let's say that, has voted in a super left Democratic Party when, when DQ, who handles the stormwater and the wastewater, goes to our legislature and says, "We want this," and these fees increases are gonna pay for all this, nobody is risking their political career to be listed as unfriendly to the environment to say no. That's not what's happening. So they have carte blanche at the state level. They really do. So they're getting, the stormwater side is definitely the leader of the bunch. Wastewater is right behind them with DQ. And then we have our water system. Those are our five main points that we have to concentrate on in every city. Every city has issues with those five points. Nobody has got the streets of gold and everything perfect and everything new. Unfortunately, Monroe is probably a little behind the sea average middle of the road right now. There are several issues. One of the things I've been doing for the last few days, and I would encourage you to do it once you hear, once we talk about this for a bit tonight and look into it a bit more, is look at the stormwater master plan, the wastewater master plan, and the water master plan. And I'm not saying read all hundred ninety-seven pages of this thing, which talks about how the system's made and how it goes on to, you know, deficiencies and it has to meet these rules. It doesn't meet these rules. Well, engineers won't say that. They won't give you a definite, it doesn't meet these rules. They'll say, should look at upgrading this, this, and this. I know in the wastewater facility, it's chapter five. Seeing all three were done by the same engineering firm, which is kind of odd. They were probably, you know, relatively the same when it comes to their layout. I wouldn't put a whole lot of stock in the stormwater master plan or get too hung up on that. I read that when I first moved to Monroe and got on the Budget Committee and looked at their recommendations of between thirteen million and thirty-three million dollars of upgrades to the stormwater system ten years ago. And I found other cities' names in the document, so it was never QA QC, so there's a lot of information that is not even relevant. And a lot of it is that those master plans make this wish list. If everything was perfect and the streets were golden paved, this is it. But that's not, that's not what we need. That's not what any city needs. That's what the state requires to have put into a master plan. And they're good for twenty years. And you can't get funding. You can't get grants through the state or federal if your master plan is older than twenty years. So that's why, and they cost about a hundred thousand dollars apiece to do them. And that's why they keep getting done all the time. Our stormwater plan was done, you know, probably about two thousand and twelve where the numbers really come through. And then we have the water in twenty twenty wastewater twenty sixteen. So at the moment, we're doing okay master plan wise, but I would definitely take a look in your spare time and look at, especially, you know, you look at the wastewater one, because I spent more time on that one today, that chapter five of what the system can do. We'll talk about that a little moving on with development here shortly. That there are, there are issues with that. Now, especially with growth, growth and development, while the developer should be paying for all their infrastructure and new roads, and that helps your overall PCI or your pavement condition index throughout a city. Unfortunately, that's usually on the outskirts of town of where your main infrastructure is or your water plant or your treatment plant. It usually gets farther and farther away. So you still have to do the work in those sections closer to the system to make sure that it can handle everything on these outskirts that are put in. And unfortunately, since we have a limited crew listening, unfortunately, it doesn't look like the city administrators, last three for sure, and maybe four, have been following the process for doing any mainline expansions on the water, doing any mainline expansions on the wastewater, any development, the whole process has not been followed through. And it took me about five minutes today to go to the Oregon website for drinking water, drinking water data and look up a simple thing that needs to be done for any development going in over three houses, and that's plan review. We can put in all the service lines. I say, Mark, put in these service lines. Put a two-inch line down here. Put in a couple of one-inch taps off at two inches, not a main line. It's not sized for a main line. Doesn't provide fire flow. It's not a main line on the water system. And we can do that all day long, providing we have a city engineer, which currently we don't necessarily have. But as the operator and a city engineer designates to the operators, you make sure it's put in correctly and we come up with a plan exemption, so we don't have to do a lot of these plans, plan reviews and things like that. But anyway, further, to go in and look, I pulled up the plan review process through Oregon Health Administration off their website today. This is the list. This is in the entire list of what the state knows. Major modifications have been done to the system because they wanna review it. They want their engineers review it. They wanna get paid to do it, and they wanna say, yes, that meets all the EPA and Oregon Health Guidelines to go through. Currently, final approval, we talked about this at the last meeting, when they sent out their letters saying we can finally use the water plant to make water.
Right.
Was approved three thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, the membrane replacements in the water plant. Because we supplied everything else to it. Twenty twenty, the master plan, because they have to agree to the master plan. Two thousand and eighteen, a water line, water treatment plant improvements, oh nine, reservoir, oh two, well number two, nineteen ninety-nine, and the water plaster plan before that. Nineteen ninety-nine. So just for comparison, I popped up Harrisburg, so I only brought one page of it, front and back. But it lists, starting recently, Castleberry subdivision, Butterfly subdivision, water treatment plant new, well number nine, master plan. Waterline improvements downtown, well number eight, Peoria Road, Spurlock subdivision, Quake Estates subdivision. And I can continue to go on and on and on. You don't have a subdivision listed on the plans. That means the state never saw a damn thing. Q site and about the same. The process has not been followed, has not been legal for what you have put in. Unfortunately, this may come back to haunt the city later. So, how the five main topics that Public Works tends to pay attention to. I mean, you have your two enterprise funds, which is your water and sewer. That's what we're really gonna talk about. And ultimately, we need to make more decisions on the water than the wastewater. However, let's go over and start on the water side, I guess. Change, change around how I had it in my head. So the water side, because the plant's really not that old. That plant should easily be able to go thirty or forty years. We all know it was the wrong type of plant to put in for a city like this with the water source we have, and it was put in incomplete. Did they all get copies of the questions that Civil West had in their email of decisions of?
I doubt this.
I doubt it.
I don't think I saw anything like that.
Okay. So, the Civil West did a scope of services and Dan contacted them to find out where they were at. And they ran through a quick, here's where we are looking to redo the water plant to get it going back online again with, based on the feasibility study that was done a few years ago. And mainly, what it comes down to is do you wanna modify the existing water plant? Or do you just wanna put in new? Neither one of them are an inexpensive option. It just isn't that way to meet the DPDs, the trihalomethanes, haliosidic acids that the water plant currently puts out. Now, those two, water and wastewater, people tend to separate them way too much. And from our line of thinking, we can't do that. What happens at the water plant affects the wastewater plant and vice versa. For instance, let's look at, we did a walkthrough and a tour. The backwash. Ninety-nine point nine nine percent of all the sewage in town comes through the lift station as pumped to the sewer plant. The rest comes from the backwash at the water plant. Mark, you still online?
There you go.
Hey, hey, Mark. I know that when the water plant was first set in the operation, that a backwash was set, reamed through the O and M at eight thousand five hundred and fifty gallons per backwash. Do you know if that's different anymore?
He's talking, but I can't hear him.
I can't hear you, Mark.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
There we go.
Sorry.
No, you're going in and out.
That, you went away again.
Hello?
Okay, we can see you.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, off the top of my head, I cannot give an accurate number, but tomorrow I can monitor and see if I can't figure out that number.
Okay. So that's what I was wondering. Just for a quick estimate. But to verify, to show that what happens at these facilities affects the other facility, we're backwashing every fifteen to twenty minutes? Roughly?
Oh, right now, we have been able to increase to thirty-minute backwash cycles. But during the winter months, the highest interval usually is about fifteen to twenty minutes, yes. Then, as we start getting closer to spring, we can go twenty to twenty-five. And now with the water levels decreasing, the, the reservoir, Fern Ridge, discharging less, the NTUs have dropped, and we can dis, or we can backwash at about thirty minutes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
As you mentioned, the NTUs, the dirtiness or the cloudiness of the water, how bad that is, how often that has to backwash. So let's say it was still said at eighty-five hundred gallons roughly, or moved to ten just for easy math. So every hour, that's twenty thousand gallons that is being pumped from the water plant to the wastewater facility. The average per person, per capita, per day is about seventy-five gallons. Max for somebody who lives at home, takes two showers a day, wastewater does everything is about a hundred. You take a hundred into twenty thousand gallons every hour, the water plant is technically currently taking place of thirty or forty homes capacity in the sewer plant that it has to treat because the backwash is happening so often.
Well, say that again. I'm not, I'm having trouble understanding that.
So the average person at home uses less than a hundred gallons per day.
Right.
The water plants sending twenty thousand gallons to the wastewater treatment.
That's our choke point for this whole system.
Every hour. No.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick up what you're putting down, I promise.
And I'll explain further. So even if we ran the plant for five hours, you're talking a hundred thousand gallons. That's a lot. That's, that's two and a half times every single home's use in this town.
Yeah.
Just from the water plant in one day. Just from backwashing.
Yeah.
So your wastewater facility, the treatment plant is designed to handle extra capacity and extra rain. In the summer, it can handle that. In the winter, it's gonna have a really hard time meeting its requirements for sampling because of all this extra water.
Right. And instead of being every thirty minutes, it's every fifteen, so it's basically.
Which increases.
Yes.
Like, and it's still not your choke point for the system. Should wake you up a bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So in reading these master plans and in reading the water master, wastewater master plan, since we're, we're doing a little math, let me pick out a couple segments out of chapter four in the wastewater facility. We talked about on the walkthrough, INI, inflow and infiltration of water that gets down into the sewer system. So it goes through a lot of what we just talked about and what the peak instantaneous flow would be that runs through the system, and it will tell you that that treatment facility can handle. If we could cut down INI in the collection system, how much is coming from the water plant, then the sewer treatment facility looks very good for the future. You read through the water master plan, it looks the same for the distribution system, for all the pipes going out to all the house. Yes, pipes are getting upsized as it's went through doing that. Fire flow needs come up. There are some main lines that need to be replaced here and there. But if the water plant is designed and working properly or a new plant or with upgrades, the tank on the hill is more than big enough, because it was overbuilt to begin with. And so the distribution system on the water side looks really good. The issues are the treatment plant, again, can't handle what we're doing on the water side and the wastewater side. Her time with the little light, but I guess the easiest way to break it down would be to, in this plan, you'll see it. And they have a little map of how your system works. All that wastewater comes down out of town, comes to the lift station right here. The lift station then pumps through a six-inch line, a duplex station over to the ponds. And then the rest joins with what's coming from the water plant. And then processes through the plants and gets put back in. So in this master plan, wastewater from ten years ago, before we started putting in developments and adding new stuff, they did an assessment of the sewer lines.
Who's they?
The engineering firm that was hired to do this.
Master plant.
Yeah, yeah. In the master plant, with Civil West. And they hired a third party to go out and do this. And the ones in red are already at capacity. This is ten years ago. These are the ones right in front of the pump station. So that should throw up a red flag. Unfortunately, the master plant doesn't say, "Stop using this lift station." Because they won't do that. They'll say, "Hey, there's an issue here." And I've shown you that these lines right here in front of the station are all red, and they even map it out, put a map with little arrows. These need to be replaced. Those have not been done. And you take it one step farther, and you could read through a little bit more of these. And this is kinda how they, they talk in master plans. Based on the data available, the peak instantaneous flow, and that would be for wastewater in a rainstorm, what's coming in from the sewer, they didn't even include the water plant discharge if it's running at this time. In studies, the current capacity of the lift station is six hundred and eighty-eight gallons a minute. That's what the pump station can pump. Okay, works out to just under a million gallons a day if it ran twenty-four seven. Unfortunately, it is inadequate calculated PIF of one thousand two hundred and twelve gallons a minute. It needs to pump in a rainstorm. So in essence, ten years ago on the master plan, they already knew that this lift station is your point. It is the failing point. And as you continue to add development in the homes, you're gonna be pumping raw sewage out of that very shortly. There is just no other way to put it. And you're gonna have a whole new world of problems because that station can't handle it. It wasn't made to handle the amount of INI and extra development in the system. So from the wastewater side, to be able to get it, the treatment plant to do what the master plan said it can do through twenty thirty-six, we need to reduce the INI in the wastewater system. We need to upgrade the lift station and reduce the amount of water coming from the water plant in backwashes. Then the treatment plan is something we don't have to worry about. It can handle it. The master plan can say that it can handle it and everything else. We have even a little bigger problem on the lift station, because it's not as easy as going in and replacing the pumps. It can pump six hundred and eighty-eight gallons per minute. Unfortunately, it pumps through a six-inch line to the treatment facility. Six-inch line at its best can pull about six hundred gallons at its very best. So there's the other reduced point after. So there's the other reduced point after the pumps in the lift station. So it's not as simple as just fixing the lift station. We need a bigger line going to the treatment plant and a lift station that can move for development.
Would you recommend two pumps to handle that twelve hundred or?
It would be a, it would be a minimum duplex station is required by the state. You have to have backup power, it must have a backup pump, you must have, yeah, there's design requirements the state requires. And when you send it in for the review, they're gonna make sure you cover all of what those are.
So essentially, if we had six hundred gallon per minute pumps, we'd have to have four of them, so two run, two are backup.
Yes, but you wouldn't want to size the pumps that way because you wouldn't want the pumps coming on more than about ten times a day, maybe twelve times a day.
Upsizing all of it.
Yeah, they're not, submersibles like they are not continuous run pump, it's not good on the pump. So you'll require more.
Otherwise, you gotta run two lines because. Well, yeah, you have to feed them.
Yeah. That line only handles so much, so.
Yeah.
So yeah, bigger line, bigger pumps. So that's the wastewater issue. And it's a big one on the wastewater side.
We also have the issue, we don't have that bridge to carry the line over the river yet.
Right, so it's got, it's got to be directional drilled underneath the river, which is a whole.
That's a, it'd be cheaper to buy the bridge.
Which is another huge issue, yes.
Chuck, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So earlier you said that we're out of, well, we have been out of compliance for some other things with our master plans and that you know, he, you thought that some of that stuff might come back to haunt us in the future?
Yes.
What, what are we looking at with that, is that like fines or being told that we need to rebuild everything from scratch? Like, what does that mean?
Um, I, it's a good question, and it's one I can't answer. I, I have never ran into a situation to where a city has just not involved the state, I've never seen something like this. That, you know, I'm sure that, and I've never looked, I'm sure the planning commission for anything going in has a set checklist of you must have this, this, and this, and then the administration would follow through with their own checklist that that part didn't get done. Because the submittal, you know, even if the planning code was written that the developer would pay, ours is now, that used to be, would pay for plan review for Oregon Health and DQ, and they would get the submittal for it. It would still be listed up by the state because it's here, it falls under this jurisdiction. And with that, the city has to give now, and this is new on the wastewater side, didn't used to happen on the water, the city has to fill out a new form for them that just started, I think this year, maybe mid last year, that asks what your capacity is and makes the city demonstrate that, yes, we can allow this development and things to go in because of this.
Okay.
I also, sorry.
Oh, no, no, go ahead, thank you.
I also, and that, you know, and I also believe that looking at the last development went on the hill, and with that not being on the list, and there's capacity issues on the wastewater side, obviously, right that lift station, big ones. But if the reviews were done and the process was finished and went through that last group of homes that went in just on the water side, you are producing trihalomethanes, haliosic acids, your water plant is out of compliance, they would have said absolutely not. You can't put more people at risk, they can't sign away a liability to say, yes, sure, give me this. They would have made and forced the council to put a moratorium on the water in the sewer system until these two points, the water plant and that lift station are taken care of. Because on the wastewater side, even by report fifteen years ago, it shows you don't have capacity to pump across the street and you put the river in jeopardy of being raw sewage dumping into it.
Oh, my God.
Just on the wastewater side, on the water side, you're still sending out these very heavily restricted disinfection byproducts that these people probably don't know of. I mean, we have to send out, we, being Monroe, quarterly has to send out with the bills, lead and copper, and that these trihalomethanes are there, it's part of the requirement, it's part of the bilateral agreements. I can't believe that any any regulatory agency would allow you to be doing just about anything right now, except fixing the water plant and that lift station.
That sounds like priority number one and two.
Yes, also sounds like we need to stop considering building things.
Yeah.
Focus on that.
I, my personal recommendation, and it's just me, would be that you put a moratorium on the city on water and wastewater for any development that hasn't started construction immediately. Because you've got two big problems you've got to fix. And while that sucks when you have people interested in developing, I think you open yourself up for a buttload of trouble if you keep pumping trihalomethanes to them and risking a sewer overflow because zero SSOs, sanitary sewer overflows are allowed in the state. They used to, you know. Okay, well, you had one that, but not anymore. They have so much power, the legislature, legislator that fines are massive. And with those fines come mandatory fixes that have to be done, just like a bilateral agreement in a certain amount of time.
So how do we go about doing a moratorium, do we need the attorney to help us with that?
I am not the person to give you the legal advice on that.
Okay, got it, understood.
Well, just out of curiosity, is there any other way that we could go about this, like by showing the state that we are taking actionable steps to address this?
I would think that that time for Monroe has passed.
We don't know for certain.
We're on the list.
Absolutely not, we don't, we don't know for certain. But Oregon Health Authority is pissed at you guys. As I mentioned at the last council meeting, that we did the annual consumer confidence report, have never in thirty plus years seen a compliance officer review that. That's a city internal document for the people.
Right.
And you had, you had a compliance officer who responded for changes to be made to that document. That's like the policy for whether the guys wear uniforms or not, I mean, it's just, it blew my mind when I saw that. So anything's possible. I don't think you have a leg to stand on with the state. We just paid a fine on the wastewater side. So they would be possibly one that would be more willing to work until you point out, or you give them the master plan, they're gonna read through it, wait, wait a minute, the river's right there. There's no way to clean it up before it gets into it.
Right.
It's already, you've already created an issue for everybody downstream who pulls drinking water out of the creek soon as that happens, so is it possible, sure, I'm not the regulatory authority, but I would think that it would be impressive if.
So it's a hard stop, basically, is what, is what, in your opinion?
In my opinion, yes.
Right.
I, I think you're in trouble.
Okay.
And you're really in trouble if the duplex pump station that you have currently working and one of those pumps fails.
Yeah.
In the middle of the winter. Because pump companies, as you can attest, they're not stocking, you know, forty horsepower submersible wastewater grinder pumps.
No.
That's not something that you call flight and say, hey, I need a new one, they said, great, we'll call Sweden or Switzerland, we'll have them start building one. Two months on holiday. They shut the whole plant down, I've ran into this. I, no, I threw that out there, I could not tell you that that is, I'm not positive that they are or that they've ever been modified. Some pumps, you can modify them to, to do a better job at grinding. So, yeah.
Well, yeah, there's actually a turd grinder brand out there.
So. I would, I would assume at the age of that, they're not. They're probably set just to pass a three inch turn, you know, a spear.
Do you think if, if there might be possibility finding excess property from other treatment facility, other towns with treatment facilities?
A motor?
No, a whole pumping system. Like Albany might have a couple of spare pumps hanging around.
If they have the same as ours, that that's.
Well, I'd want bigger.
Yeah, I know.
And why wouldn't they keep them, I mean, as a spare in case theirs go down?
Well, if they change their model.
Are you talking about like a time share on pump type thing, or is that what you're talking about?
Well, you know, I think Albany just went through a update, my brother-in-law works over there, and I'm thinking if they updated their pumps to a different model, different size, if we could find one.
Um, you can, I've seen that happen in the past. They have to surplus it out, but there's rules on surplusing. Certain amounts you can just pass on to other cities and you don't have to go through the surplus. They can't move and adjust SDC funds like Monroe has to pay for maintenance. Because that's just a whole nother scary issue, as I read through that more today. Because SDC funds have very specific rules and requirements that they have to be spent on.
Building the capacity, basically.
And so, yes, and then you could rebuild and have a spare. I don't think in this situation, that's really.
Yeah, we're gonna have to reach out and find a new one.
You're gonna need a new pipe across the river.
Well, that's, yeah.
So, and by that, you would then size the pumps for that station so they're not over pumping or turning on and off, on and off, all day long. So your pumps really need to be bigger, and especially for future, as you look twenty years down the road, potential development that's around. They have to pump, you know, even the master plan looks at about, you know, a PIF or a peak hits that flow about seventeen hundred gallons a minute. And so.
I have a question, if we had a, if we oversized the pump and the pipe, could we put a check valve on it to keep it from, give it enough backflow so it doesn't turn on and off until we get to that capacity, that not done anymore?
It wouldn't work for the system.
Okay. BFWs wouldn't work either, probably.
And they wouldn't hurt, they're better on the pump. Especially those size pumps. Yeah, you want, you don't want to hammer them stop and start, that's not right.
Or soft starts.
Yeah, and that's still assuming in all of this, and I haven't gone in further into it, that a six inch pipe put under the river decades ago isn't actually leaking
Yeah.
some of the river into it, which again would cut down your capacity on the treatment side. I mean, there's, there's a lot of issues because there's no real way to test that, the way the system's set up. We can't turn off the system and, you know, do a pressure test on it and see the system will back up and overflow while we're trying to get the test done, there's just not enough capacity in those pipes leading up to the lift station to be able to pull that off. So the nice thing about that is because you're not under a whole lot regulatory on the wastewater side, that has the potential to be able to be put out for a bond. The bond takes some time to get put in, but you're still looking at a couple million dollars to do that lift station.
And a bond has to be put on the ballot, correct? And we're assuming the residents of Monroe will pass it.
There's a lot of assumptions there.
I'm just checking.
The issue being is it gets older and pumps lose capacity as they get older, they don't always pump at this rate. Looking at pump curve, that when issues start happening, because they will, because your infrastructure will continue to break down, you'll get more and more INI. So you still gotta work on keeping the INI down in the pipes to kind of hold it together. But the station itself isn't working, and the pipes right up to it aren't working, and that needs to be changed sooner than later. But yes, if the bond fails and they mandate you do it, and Harrisburg fell into this twenty years ago, twenty-one years ago, they'll say, okay, it's done now. We're gonna go to bid for a contractor, we're gonna send them down, we're gonna fix it, and it will be paid by user rates. They did it in another town where their, their their user rates went from ten dollars a month to over a hundred and twenty-five a month just for service.
Gilcrest is doing that right now, Gilcrest and Crescent.
So the state steps in if the, if the city hasn't already done it. So it's cheaper to try for the bond, show them, hey, you know, here's a bond measure, you do this, some property tax, we do this, another five dollars, seven dollars for next thirty years on, on the user rates, and we can get it done.
I think I'm paying sixty dollars a month just in the fee in the state for them doing it.
So we were mandated in Harrisburg to upgrade the sewer plant because it couldn't handle the flows that were in in two thousand and three, two thousand and two, went out to bond three times, and then the state said, all right, well, we'll show up with equipment, it's all gonna be user rates, and the fees jumped or maxed, what the? Yeah, didn't split it between property tax, you you didn't do anything, so this is how they're gonna do it, they're gonna give you the loan at a higher interest rate. And then may, you pay back the loan to them at a higher interest rate after they force you to do the work, I mean, that's what it comes down to.
Anyone know if, if there's a way to pose a bond measure for a bond, when you're sending it out to the public to get it on to the ballot, can you, can you say like, here's what's in it for you, you're gonna pay less if you go the bond route versus having the state come and enforce it? Does anyone know if that's something we can do? And then my second question is, how far out of compliance are we with THMs? Are they wildly, wildly bad?
THMs, yes. The, the limits aren't exceedingly high over, because it's, because they're, they're so bad, the threshold is pretty minimal. And you, you hit, Monroe hit and misses going over, however, you've been in violation so many times now that, and everybody knows the reason why, even the state knows the reason why, you know, they know it's the source with the type of treatment plant. So and they've already said, you gotta do it, you gotta get something done. And unfortunately, as we transition from wastewater, there's an issue that on the wastewater side, that lift station that council really needs to sit aside and look at, then we go to the water. The water is the one that we're already mandated to do, the wastewater is not, but it's there.
They're connected.
You have an issue there, if you continue to put homes in this town, you're gonna have a real issue there. So the water side is the one that we need to talk about to actually get some decisions made on which way you want to move forward, which way you want to send the engineer, which while I don't care for the engineering firm that's been using this, but they've already done the master plan, the feasibility study, the addendum for this, it makes no sense to start over at this time either. What needs to happen is it needs more scrutiny going forward to make sure that it gets what we need done. So let's talk about what, our treatment. Through the feasibility study, if you don't have a copy, I'm sure gone, I'm sure it had to be thrown in a packet somewhere, right? But what it really comes down to is modifying the existing plant or putting in a new one, different type of system. So let's go pros and minuses on that, so you have some comparisons. New our treatment plant would be all nice and new. A mixed media filter, it would have pre-sedimentation flocculation to remove a lot of those organics that you get out of the river. With the intake structure already being done, that's helpful. Because if that's designed properly, that could help reduce some of them. But even if that reduced down enough to lower the trihalomethane, so you weren't getting hit so often, it doesn't matter because you're already under a regulatory requirement to do something that the treatment plant. And the intake structure is not part of treatment, it's just part of your monitoring. So and new plant would, should be good for thirty to forty years. And it would require less operators' time. The biggest bad part about it is it's the highest. The biggest bad part about it is it's the highest priced option. Because you're starting from new. So that's it. Currently modifying the current system. The pros would be that it would be lower cost. The membrane system with modifications to it. Does make very good water. That's why the membrane systems are. Used a lot. They require lots of operator time, even when they're functioning properly. It's a heavy operator system. And. While the upgrades with the SCADA system and pumps and. Pre-treatment and things like that that would be modified to the existing plant. At lower cost, unfortunately, and then a lot of cities have fallen into this. When you contract out for operator services like Monroe did for a long time. With OMI's and others like it. It is not there in their contract to perform maintenance and upkeep on the plant. So you have an operators there and he could care less if the pipes are rusting away. And when you walk through the plant, you can see a lot that there is maintenance that should have been done. That just wasn't because it wasn't their job. It's not what they were paid there to do. Their job wasn't to protect the infrastructure. It was just to operate. So. There may be by modifying. What's currently there. You may find other issues in the process.
It sounds like the operating costs, meaning the operator hours, because labor is typically a higher percentage of cost. That the new plant would actually be amortized over thirty to forty years. Would be the least expense, less.
Dramatically lower.
Yeah.
A typical mixed media. Uh, upload clarifier with a mixed media filter trains and their skids, kind of like the membrane. You're gonna put two of them in there. Uh, yeah, night and day. Operator's gonna be there an hour, hour and a half at most. And that's including doing any maintenance and paperwork and lab testing. And that's, and that's probably pushing it too. I wouldn't expect more than, more than an hour.
And um, I know, I'm trying to remember back. I wasn't on the council at the time, but. I think the original operator plant was two million dollars back when they put it in.
I think that was probably pretty close.
I mean, that, that, around there. And I'm assuming that we're probably looking at five times that cost to do anything.
I would guess you're probably looking in, uh. It's still more or less the basic setup. Um, it's just a different train. With a few different processes. I think there are a few. Things that the, the engineer should be. Forced to look at, that's already existing, that would help keep costs down. And I would say for like instance, the clear well. So once it goes through those membrane plants, if you were gonna go with a new system. Um, there's a clear well underneath that floor. It's a forty thousand gallon clear well. It's encased in, you know, one, one foot thick concrete. Instead of building another one of those, use that. That becomes, that could become a public works office, storage inventory, which you guys don't have. The old building and use as part of the treatment process train underneath it, still has the access hatches to it. I mean, there's still, I think that should be encouraged. If you went with a new plant to look at some of those things. That could be modified to help keep that cost down around five, by million dollars. Would be my guess.
To me, that sounds reasonable, to be honest with you guys.
I'm putting in two treatment plants right now in Harrisburg and two tanks, two storage reservoirs. And. The tanks are almost a little bit more than half of the eleven million dollar project.
Okay.
Now, I'm not treating for off-surface water. I'm treating well water, so I have other issues. I have minerals, I have iron, I have manganese, I have, you know, um, so it's a different treatment process. But a treatment train, they're still not overly expensive. For each unit, kind of like we have two with the membrane pack.
And we'd have to build it on a separate footprint and then use the clear well.
I, that, that would be my suggestion, um, to do that because a mixed media filter plant is very heavy. And you'd be sitting it on top of an open well. I think it's in the feasibility study that was done. Talking about modifying the current building to be able to hold a new treatment train that was a convention package. I think you're throwing good money after bad to try to make that seismically work.
Yeah, I, I like your suggestion of using the old building where the old plant is.
I think it has a lot of potential still. But again, new is higher cost and I'm not the one paying for it.
And the modification wouldn't be the five million, it'd be. Do you know?
No, I have no idea. It depends what the engineer could look at, say, yes, we can use this. It's still in good shape. It still has a capacity of life that when the plans reviewed. By Oregon Health, they will say, yes, that makes sense. And normally. The process, by the time it gets to plan review, that's the third. Set of professional stamped eyes looking at, besides any of us or mine or anybody else who thinks they know. It's gonna go, you know, you're gonna have. This company most likely who would end up doing it and then it would go to your city engineer. Your city engineer would then review it for modifications to those plans to make sure. That it structurally meets this and this, your structural engineers and then your mechanical engineers. At your city engineer, your engineer of record would then look at that, then send it to the state and the state. Usually has a comment or two, but they, they expected it's went through this stepped process. So they're looking that they can pull the regulatory requirements. They're not looking at. What the, the structural capabilities of the building.
Now, if we did a modification, would we have another thirty, forty years out of it?
Quite possibly.
So I, I, I would suggest the best way to sell this, and I'd say sell by, meaning convince our taxpayers. You, you got the higher upfront cost for a new one, but if we could calculate out. A potential operating cost over the thirty, forty years and do them side by side. But would that be something worthwhile doing?
With the caveat being though, once we get in and we see the state of, of repair or disrepair on some of this equipment. That could add costs.
Well, yeah, this, this would be down the line, downline of that, because I would think we'd have to know that before we even brought out a bond.
So I would suggest before those questions could go up, come up, and now that we have the, the bigger pictures shown. Of our water and our wastewater. That. If you haven't, or at least going into it, read. The feasibility study, because that goes into a bit of the two, the options that are different. Um, and that's kind of where it ended. Because. Previous staff just didn't take it forward or didn't bring it to you or what, what, I don't know what reasons. And the addendum number one that was recently done of what it would cost for them to start looking at this. And really start going into it. That doesn't talk about engineering or making the plans or anything. They talk about pre-procurement of the equipment, which allows us to sit down and go. That's the treatment train we want. This city, this one, this one has it. We've already called and said, hey, these are the ones. You know, this is where it works and everything. Those are ones I want. And then. While they're not gonna give you a cost savings. It, it's one of those blind numbers you won't see because you won't get charged more because they have to modify for whatever might go in. It's actually saying, this is the, the plant manufacturer. Here's the hookup. This is how we're gonna hook up the pipes to the pumps to the, and it cuts back on the engineering, which can speed up the process because. You need to move on this.
Okay.
Thank you. So I would suggest. Having these sent out to the council so they can read. And we could have a, a quick discussion based on this. Whether a decision's totally made or not. And we'll focus just on the water for now. Of which of these alternatives you wanna go. And I would caution you on getting too specific at this point. It really needs to come down to, do you wanna modify the old plant and keep a membrane? Or go to a different plant? That's really the overall biggest question. The little pieces of, if we went new and modified, knew some of this here. That's all extra spec stuff down the road. The big question is, do you wanna pull off what we already have? Because we spent money on infrastructure. Taxpayers have spent money on this infrastructure. Do you wanna modify and keep it? And this gives some. Rough cost analysis in here from three years ago, so you had almost twenty percent of that based on.
That's the feasibility study, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And then. Say, yes, we wanna do that because there's already infrastructure here. It's, it's hard to throw away. A good product. The membrane system is a great product. It makes good water. And they both do. Um, and you've spent plenty of money on it. It just wasn't done right. So. We still made good water, but it's paid for it in the process of what it was asked to do. But it, I mean, we got new filters in there now. We got new membrane units and both those kids are relatively new, so. Um, there is some thought that needs to be put into, should we modify this? Or. Because it's just not the right system for the source water. The source water's not gonna change. Do we go to a system that's actually designed to work that source water and put out good water?
Can I ask another question?
Absolutely.
So when you say source water, you mean muddy water coming from the long term, right?
Yes.
Okay, what, what system, and I'm sorry if I missed this part, like what system or systems are better than membrane for muddy water? Cause I always thought membranes can handle just about anything.
No, uh, they can't. Um, the membranes can, remember we talked about the anti-use. The dirtiness or the cleanliness of the water.
Yeah.
Membrane systems, um, really aren't designed, none of them are, because you use such small pinholes in those. In those trains, um, they're not designed more to do more than between ten and twenty N T U's. The river itself is four hundred.
Oh.
Nasty eight hundred. A multi. A multi-mixed media filter is better for higher N T U's. So you would have, let's say for instance. You filled a swimming pool.
Yeah.
And on the top, the first, what you can see on top is large rock. Uh, you know, two inches around. Underneath that, what you don't see is the one inch rock, then the three quarter under that. Then the pea gravel, then the sand. Water goes through, it catches these different sized modules based on a chemical that's put in there to make. Them flock together to make large dirt particles and what's coming out underneath the sand and the underdrain is the cleaner product.
We had talked about putting in a filtration system like that to supplement the membrane system anyway. I, I. I hear what you're saying, Council Myers, that, you know, maybe we should try to spring for the brand new thing, but I feel like it'll also be a really hard sell to residents who've been here for a long time. Who are like, what the heck? We just got a brand new fandangled system twenty, thirty years ago.
And that is a very good, um, question that you need to throw around a bit. Because yes, you could do a modification of the existing system. It's a membrane plant.
Yeah.
And put a sedimentation flocculation basin with a mixed media, just a simple mixed media behind it. That then goes to the membrane system to do it. But remember the cons, your operator's still gonna be there. Cause the membrane system's still gonna take almost the same amount of time. That he's doing now. Now you've just added more equipment to it. Anything he might have saved, he's still gonna be.
Operating costs as the deciding factor for me, anyway.
Yeah, and, yeah, as you read through the, the, the feasibility study, it'll, it'll bring up lots of questions. And ultimately, you gotta get down to some basic answers and the way you feel that you wanna go at the end. New, modified, what that specific modifications would be. Or if any of that can be modified with a new system. Will come up in the design phase. Right now, it's more or less, you wanna keep the plant you got or do you not?
No, we don't even know what the river's gonna be when it, when the dam comes out.
Yeah.
No, and, you know, and we don't know what kind of intake water we will be, get it. But I would be pretty confident that it will not get worse than it's been.
Oh, you don't think so would be.
You think it'll get cleaner?
I would think that with a proper, uh, infiltration gallery or an intake built, it would not get any worse. Know if it would get any cleaner, um, the water will, the water quality will change with that. But I don't think it will get worse.
Okay.
Has a potential to get better.
It does.
But with Fern Ridge being so shallow.
Yeah.
Like a big cesspool.
Thank you, Chuck.
Yes.
If we went with the new system, does that alleviate the whole backwash wastewater issue? Or could it potentially? Cause that is another issue that.
The backwater waste, the backwash is just a part of the treatment process. However, on a new treatment system, a mixed media filter, since it's designed for very dirty water. I used to have one coming off a river that was pretty bad and we'd back flush. About once every four hours.
Okay, so it would at least reduce some of that strain also on the wastewater.
If you're N T U with the intake system, or if you bought a. Mixed media filter that has a pre, like an upflow clarifier in it and, and that. That helps reduce and flocculate bigger particles. That could also reduce the amount of time that a backwash would be needed on those systems, because they are made. For dirty water. So, and nobody wants to buy one if they're gonna back flush every hour. So, um, they really are designed for what's my N T U's on the river and. We're gonna have the engineering go, well, here you go. This is, and they're going, oh, oh, okay. Well, that changes what that. Mixed media filter is in there. Maybe they have to start with a larger grain before they go to a smaller. To be able to compensate for a dirtier water.
I, I do like the thought too of not having to have so much engineering. It's like we eat up so much. We see that so much that we eat up so much in the engineering that. That is one, like you said, a plus.
On your, your numbers, uh, Council Myers. Yeah, you're gonna look at this from a couple of years ago and you're gonna add fifteen percent for engineering.
Right.
I mean, those numbers aren't necessarily in there. If you, and just another question that gets thrown in there, not that we wanna get in the specifics, but if numbers is what you're really looking at. That modification of the existing system. Needs to hold a higher contingency number in there for what you might find. Where what's new and it's been pre-purchased.
Right.
That number should be lower of finding things that are unexpected because. They may say, oh, we dug up, uh, this.
A mastodon bone.
Yeah, we dug up this weird concrete pipe. We're gonna have to do this and that's gonna be another twenty thousand dollars to remove all this back up.
Engineering involved in a new plant. I mean, that's, that, there's issues with the new plant too. I mean.
You're, you're looking at, you know, twelve to fifteen percent with a modification, you're looking at fifteen to twenty. With a higher contingents.
And of course, all of this. Doesn't include the lift station that needs to be brought into play too.
Nope, and wastewater is a different font. And I have not gotten through. And I have not gotten through or looked at the C I P on the wastewater. I would assume. Most of them would have already, because they identified them, would have already called for upsizing all these pipes are listed and read around there. And so. A percentage, a fraction of them go, you can't spend S D C money. On. Existing infrastructure. Maintenance, it really has to be on new. So if you're gonna take a six inch for, let's do easy math, you're gonna take a six inch pipe. And it doesn't meet the requirements. You're gonna put a twelve inch pipe in. You can't use S D C funds.
For increased capacity?
For the six inch pipe. The new six inches of capacity. So half of it could get covered up.
So it's a proportional. Interesting.
Right, so I haven't went through the C I P to look, as I read through. Um, the majority of the hundred ninety seven pages uh, over the last four days on, especially the wastewater side. Because the water issues are a little bit more already out there. It was easy to see that. Yes, a moratorium should be in place. And that this lift station is the key to the city growing over the next twenty years. And immediately. And so I I didn't get into the C I P of. How much could, those amounts that could be used? Because S D C. Funds, which most cities have some S D C funds. Can be spent is very, very limited. And is a very, very hot topic if they're spent wrong. I also agree. With. The water side and the feasibility study, just, you know, to add a few other points on there. And the process that the council already approved and then took back. Would be for aeration in the water tank. I think it's very good. I think your previous administrator was doing it illegally. It's new infrastructure. So it could be spent for S D C funds. It does need to go through plan review with Oregon Health. Um, it does need to have a par upper bidding process. You can't say, boy, I like the one this guy told me when he called me, so I'm gonna buy that one. And I think it's a very good piece that. Could and would potentially reduce. Some of the D P D's in the water. If you keep that ariated. Um, you can potentially lower. Drawn a blank, it lowers, one doesn't do anything for the other, and I can't remember which way it is. And it would allow. For the dissipation of some of the chlorine and prevent the stagnation. Which allows us to move the water tank levels back up for fire protection. Unfortunately, fire protection just as, or fire. Putting out fires is not the way it used to be. They didn't run in open every hydrant and throw water and drown the hole. You know, that's the way they used to it. That's just not how it's done anymore. So. Um, even firefighting flows are a bit different than they used to be. Um, just with the process of protect surrounding structures and putting that house out the best they can. But in an area where there's potential for wildfire. Um, it's something we always gotta keep in mind. I I hated lowering. And having the tanks run at a lower level down in that ten foot range. Um, in the winter when it was raining, we were running seven to eight foot for a while, and that's still three day, more than three days of storage for town. Um, which is the requirement. But. Because that tank was built so much, but with more water that sits stagnant, your D P D levels go up. So, um, yes, um, parts that you'll read in in the feasibility study like that, I think it's a great. Piece and should have been originally added when a tank was that oversized for a town the size. That that is half of my storage. I have four thousand people. And your tank's half of my storage size.
It's weird. They overbuilt that and didn't. And compressed air foam and firefighting reduces the water to by ninety percent.
Yeah, and it'll be real nice when the insurance industry. Starts to get on board with that and realize that fire insurance. Because damages from firefighting are still insured at these ridiculously high levels to homeowners. Um, that they get on board and realize no restoration costs. With the different techniques have changed over the last five years or so. Reduces those costs. So if the houses, you know, and makes it easier to save that. With less damage. You know, just flooding it with water was the old way to do it, but you ruined everything damn out. But that's a whole nother thing. So that is. This will crack you. Without going into a whole lot of detail, because I could, I could really break it down a long way. These are the two issues that that this council needs to address. Um, and water needs to be a priority. And your wastewater and further development is a serious potential issue at that lift station.
And and of course, it would be the pipes be, be feeding it too, right? So.
Yes, the pipes right in the area and that's in the feasibility study from twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. They called all those out. You know, they did estimates on what the I N I was ten years ago and said those pipes. It's time the upsize of a pipe gets over about sixty percent or seventy percent capacity. And some of those that were seventy and eighty and ninety percent. Ten years ago, and again, the I N I, the old concrete pipes break down further every year. Which puts more I N I into the system. So if you, we read. Some of those chapters on that. The possibilities are. Nasty. Just nasty.
So you talking about going out for two bones?
I'm not talking about anything. I'm just, I'm just mentioning to the council that they are mandated to fix the waters. We already know that. However, there's a sewer problem that needs to be addressed. If you continue to allow development, because I got notice of a possible development meeting tomorrow and I went. Unless they're putting in a lift station with a separate pipe underneath the river all the way to the treatment for it. There's nothing that says you can't.
Wouldn't that be better? Put S T C charges towards that, couldn't you?
No, 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 not with, not with new development.
Cause you can only do like percentages of the increase.
Well, you'd have, yeah, you that, again, you'd have to get a lawyer for that and change your municipal code. Cause municipal code with cities, including Monroe's, which I've looked up, says new infrastructure is paid for by the developer. So if you're gonna have current citizens pay for S D C for infrastructure. The developers putting in. So they don't have to charge as much for each lot. I I I I don't know how that would work. To do that. Yeah, S D C would be, you know. In, you know, there, there's a really interesting line right there.
You're talking to putting in, uh, what, two hundred and twenty homes down here? Wouldn't it be just about a feasible to put in a new lift station down that way? Have the company do that and just pump it over to the lagoons?
I mean, if they wanted to go in and put this in, well, this is what our system can't pump.
If they wanna build.
We'd have to make them.
About two hundred and twenty homes?
I think it was a hundred.
No, it wasn't quite that many, but.
It was a hundred and twenty.
Well, you got limits property and then you got the, uh. The other one.
It's less than two. If you put a moratorium on it, you could say, okay, but it will cost you. You need to build all the infrastructure. It needs to go to this lift station.
Conditions.
Station has to go to directly to the treatment plant.
And that's, that's an option.
It is, and it's been done, and a lot of very large cities do that where developers really wanna get in. And they've already spent a lot of money by the time they get to that point.
I don't know if any of these developers will do that.
So, yeah, that that's always an option.
I don't think that's what's been communicated to them either up until this point, so.
Well, when they hit it, get hit with a moratorium. It's gonna stop everything, so. They either gonna have to help comply with some of this or.
Just talking about those. You're not even talking. This other stuff going on, so.
And I don't know. Yeah, I just don't know the legal ramifications of saying, we have a moratorium. If you want to rebuild our lift station and the piping around it, put a new line under the river where it currently sits. Right, that may work.
How does that affect like a single property, single home going up?
Anything, it's anything new, I'm assuming, so. I've seen some that limit. Certain developments. For some moratoriums, say, okay, you can do this and you can do this and only for the next eighteen months unless city doesn't do this. I. I think that was easier to do back then. If you're gonna do something now, for one, you do it for all. And it's not already started construction. I know there's a couple of houses up here and they're already. Flattening, the infrastructure is already going in, they're already doing that work. That wouldn't stop that because there's equipment on site. So anything else that hasn't been approved. And went through by the planning and then the city council.
So it doesn't matter if it's one home or a hundred homes.
Correct.
Wow, that's.
It's harsh, I know, but we got big problems.
How much of a building for like this? If you put this water treatment plant in that. Has the gravel like you were talking about. Yeah, how big a plant would that? You know, square foot. Footprint.
It wouldn't be. It wouldn't be much bigger than what you currently have.
So just double what that, what is there?
You're kinda looking at thirty by forty, there's still package.
And you can still use the reservoir underneath.
It's possible. So, and it depends on, it depends on what equipment's pre-purchased. Not all of them are the same size. So the engineer would ask, say, okay, here's what we're gonna do. Build a building big enough to put two of these side by side in the building. And have it available for a third to be thrown in. It's just part of the requirements, kinda like the one down there is where we have the chemicals staying on the side. It could take a third train. Problem is, our source water is still so bad, it's gonna, you know, that it still needs to be modified to do that. Um, they're gonna look for that future growth at the plant. So once you add all those up or whatever configuration you put in. The building will come about the same. I have eight. Treatment units going in, my building's thirty by forty.
Well, there's a lot of room down there, but when it floods down there. And it's really build the building up high again.
It would definitely have, need an under drain system, yeah.
What if you can use that reservoir like you're talking, that'll be, catch me out.
Even if they did something else, we just need the engineer looking. Again, we're getting specific. But they did something else like. The new plant was built up and they wanted the clear well and you wanna do and that. It could have an under drain system in that area. To a still well. With an outside pump into it that then pumps it into the current clear well and that becomes part of a waste well that pumps it to the wastewater treatment. To keep water out of that area so it doesn't affect. Future points. I mean, it just needs. Options need to be looked at. When it gets to a design phase, no matter which way the council chooses to go. Of using what's there, the most effective. Possibilities.
So it looks like we need to go home and do some homework.
You're gonna have a flooding issue and that levy though?
Oh, yeah. You still got the Willamette down here that backs way up, seven miles.
And so it's still gotta be built to the, you know, hundred year storm. So it 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 will, the building will still sit up like.
Yeah, ninety six. Covered it. Ninety six, before I moved here. You had to go through water, had to go up on. You had to take detours, you couldn't even go down ninety nine.
I was working, I'd been working for a small city, my first day I started with a couple of years. Down Douglas County in ninety six. And I was standing. In highway ninety nine. With chest waiters and it was overflowing into my chest like green. Green, down there drain.
Drain, okay.
And our. Uh, our ponds were actually on. The other side and, yeah, I, there was no way to get to it.
Yeah.
Couldn't tell where they started, where they ended.
Oh, boy.
High water to get to station.
If you're gonna build a new water plant. Down there, would it be feasible to put it on this side of the river? They had some land here. The, your, your, uh, water intake. It just pumps water to wherever. It doesn't have to go very far, but. If you could find something on this side of the river.
Again, I think that would be a consideration for the engineers. Not, not bad idea. I'm not sure what it would save. Your wastewater could use, because you have a new treatment pipe coming from the well up, all the way up to the tank. That was brand new, all the way up to the distribution tank. So you could cut it on this side of the river and hook right into that and use the other half to pump back. To the treatment plant because the wastewater or the backwash water still has to be treated, can't just be dumped in the river. There are onsite treatments where you might not have to do that, but then you're really raising the cost. Because then it has to meet those D Q T M D L stormwater requirements.
When's that gonna kick in?
It's already kicked in.
Does it? We don't comply with that yet. So if you use that water treatment plant over here for wastewater or a. Stormwater collection. Treat it before it goes in the river and build yourself a new water plant. On this side of the river.
Again, it it's possible. I think your costs are rising exponentially doing it that way.
Yeah.
Everyone, I've got an obligation here in Silverton, so I'm gonna sign off, but I just wanted to say thank you, Chuck, for your time and expertise, and I hope everyone has a good night.
Yeah, it's the first time in a long time I've heard the truth about a lot of stuff.
Yeah, right.
This has been very eye opening and a bit scary and I. Especially when the state doesn't even know what's going on.
Yeah, I mean, there's sometimes, I can swear, we were pulled in exact opposite sometimes.
Well, yeah, it's been. It's been a challenge.
What'd you guys get me into?
It's all right. I'm glad you're not in his position.
Those would be my, uh, those would be to, in in conclusion, just to finish up and so we can all. Move on to something else tonight. In conclusion, those would be my recommendations of an immediate moratorium. On, uh, development in town for, because of water and sewer problems. Um, until they can get fixed. And that each case will be looked at in the, you know, case by case, once you get one or the other fixed. Um, depending on the requirements, because say if the wastewater came in and got fixed. And the water is in process. There would be no reason to deny.
Okay.
The development.
So we'd, we'd have to get the lawyer feedback and then we'd have to do a. Either emergency meeting or on call online.
So, and, uh. So I would definitely put out a moratorium. And. Then next meeting. We really need a concise decision to allow the engineering firm to move forward. On which way you wanna go. And again, that'll show progress to the state. To some extent. There still haven't really completed anything, because it should already been built, sure, even fixed, so it's just way behind the ball. And. But it does give us a little dump, but okay, they're working on this. We've decided.
Direction never hurts.
No, absolutely not. And then we need to come up with some. Ideas. And maybe. If we, if we didn't, an R F P. Got a engineer of record, you could task him with a. Lift station. Upgrade and allow them to take off and start working on that, getting preliminary engineering and design and going after going. Yes, this is correct. All this information is gonna provide, yes, it's an issue, here's the fix. And here's what it's gonna cost and that will make it then. Something that, you know, is more tangible to say, okay, well, we need to get this on a bond measure in twenty twenty six. You start designing compliant plans so it can go out to construction. If the bond fails, then it goes to user fees, but it has to.
It's the bond does, let's, let's hypothetically, if the bond does fail, if it gets on bond and the bond fails. How long would it take to be mandated by the state? Well, say, I mean, your experience, it took twenty years.
There's a lot of hypotheticals there. There's a lot of hypotheticals there, I would say it depends on simple things like rainfall, the deterioration of your pipes. Um, it could happen by the end of this year.
So a lot of variables.
Yeah, we get to a rainstorm, we've got some development, um, pipes who just fallen apart even worse. Was an issue ten years ago. I haven't popped those manholes to see how much is backing up in the system when it's already raining. Is it this far from going over, we just got lucky, or haven't noticed? I I couldn't tell you that, um, it could be next week, I mean, you know, who knows?
Yeah, we've had bonds before that. Got downloaded and nothing was pushed beyond that. And of course, at that time, DEQ and state didn't care, but now they are.
Oh, yeah, it's a whole, it's a whole different regulatory ballgame now. And they're funding their programs with fines and fees, and they changed their mission statement. A few years back, you know, to educate, promote, um, to increase environmental protections and. You know, it used to say through education and priority, now it says we will force compliance through monetary means. That's right on their front page, we are going to fine you to make you do this. We're aware of that now.
This, uh, property down here, let's say, put in two hu- two hundred homes and the sewer pipe. Uh, I don't know, is that a six inch pipe that goes underneath the high school football field?
No idea, Mark would have to answer that one.
It's just something that might just wanna look into, you know, I don't know, twelve inch, ten inch, whatever it takes to.
Hold that may homes anyway.
I think that pipe under the school is a ten or.
Is it ten?
Or I think it's a ten or a twelve.
At one time, we had it street right away, Pine Street go all the way across to the river.
Right.
And the high school built on top of it without. High school football field track right over the street.
Things to be aware of.
Things weren't followed back then. My house and doing stuff now that.
So our takeaways are really to read the ma- the master plans, focus on the feasibility study.
Certain chapters, certain chapters of the master plan, there's a whole lot of.
Five I have for wastewater.
There's a whole lot of fluff, um, that is required for, that the state says you must put this in master plan. I wouldn't read all that. Current conditions, future. If you want some light reading, print out the SDC stuff. When I was putting my place in, because I was like, who else has SDC stuff? You know, there might be, you might find some nuggets in there, you just never know. Well, they modified the rules again on SDC, because, um. Complaints and, uh, other people getting involved, so they have limited the scope further of what they can be used for.
The city's got over a million dollars in SDCs and we can't do hardly anything with them.
When's the aeration gonna go in that tank up here, or are you gonna put one in?
Oh, like I mentioned earlier, it's a really good idea that need to be done, the process for which, in which it was being done was not correct.
Didn't have a. So what's the holdup at this point? More bids or?
It needs to go out. For proper bidding, it needs to be reviewed by Oregon Health Authority, the plans, um, there's no set of plans for what is just a piece of equipment. Um, they're gonna want details, and they're thirty eight hundred dollars to approve it, they're gonna want the. The city engineer of record to submit it, um, with his stamp that he agrees with this. Can't just pick a contractor and have it done, uh, that just can't be done that way.
Yeah, so, well, summer's coming up and fire suppression and Monroe's got a hundred and thirty six square miles to cover here.
Yep, huge fire district, so I understand the issues, they.
Well, that's the problem too, the fire district is larger than the city of Monroe. And the people outside of the fire district don't pay for what we have to put in there.
Yeah, it's it it, that's not uncommon at all.
Yep, and the fire department doesn't wanna pay for it, or they have it in the past.
They haven't got the money either.
Yeah.
No, but I mean, the the actual district.
I mean, you look at Harrisburg, it goes almost Corvallis, it covers I five from just north of Corvallis past the Harrisburg exit, I mean.
You know what they did to I five? There was a time, twenty or thirty years ago, if you were connected up to an interstate, you got federal monies. But that went away, so now you're covered, now you're stuck. I used to sell to fire departments. Okay, anything else, we have lots to think about. I wanna go home and read.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. Go to sleep, Chuck.
Thank you Chuck for your time. And your knowledge as well, it's.
I I don't sleep much, so. And multiple says, matter of fact, I've canceled all my DRC contracts recently, the other ones I had. Um, so I have Harrisburg and I have a DRC in Monroe, because I can see both are already taking ninety hours a week from myself.
Thank you, Chuck. All right, we're adjourned, folks, thank you, Mark, have a good night.
Yeah, thank you.
Happy birthday to Emerson.
Emerson, happy birthday, Emerson's happy birthday. Thank you. Oh, oh, you did pass it along? Thank you, I appreciate that, yeah, my, uh, my father-in-law actually took Emerson out there on Friday, and we're heading out there this coming weekend to do some fishing.
Well, the feasibility, so you might actually be on the city website.
I'll talk to you later.
We'll get it figured out and get it out to him.